I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, April 26, 2022. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Here.
Gephardt.
Here.
Niznik.
Here.
Raj Paul.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Zith.
Here.
Thank you.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. Welcome, everyone. I know, it's so exciting. We're really excited to have you here. Just gonna give you a second to just have a seat. So, welcome. I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful civically engaged lives. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us electronically on BV22. We're glad to have you observe and participate in our meetings. At this time, I would take a motion to approve our agenda for the evening. Kitty moves. Stacy seconds. Laura, can you call the vote, please?
Garcia.
Yes.
Gephardt.
Yes.
Niznik.
Yes.
Raj Paul.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Zith.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Agenda's approved. However, I am going to exercise president's privilege right now and announce two awards that our wonderful superintendent doesn't yet know about, that I just found out about tonight. So, to those who are listening, Dr. Anderson has been awarded by the Colorado School Public Relations Association the Communicator of the Year Award, which he will receive. I think you've had a little bit to communicate about this year, Rob. Just a little bit, been a little busy. And I'm not done. There's another one. This one's from the National School Public Relations Association, and he has been awarded the Superintendent to Watch Award. So, another round of applause, please. Two very well-deserved awards. I'm not quite sure what it means to watch. We're hoping that means to watch you continue to do the amazing work that you're doing, so. And Randy Barber can't come out to tell you more about it because he's running the meetings from behind the curtain. So, anyway, if you want to know more, he can fill you in, Rob. So, anyway, congratulations. And now, we'll turn it over to you, Dr. Anderson, to give your report.
Thank you, Board President, Gephardt, members of the board. Thank you for that, Kathy. That's very humbling. And we have an incredible communications team and just an incredible senior staff, all working together to communicate. So, an award that comes any to part of this district, I think, is something that we all share. So, thank you for that. It's so good to see everyone here this evening. We are so excited for public comment and for you all to share your thoughts with our board. I think that I speak for all of us when we share the -- just we're so enthusiastic and really appreciate you all making the time to spend a Tuesday night with us. A few announcements, board members. So, as I've been talking to you all and to the public around the teacher roundtables, we've completed all of our elementary schools, 36 schools, 450 teachers over lunch. Great ideas that we shared, many of which made it into our budget, preliminary budget. And now, I'm into my fifth middle school, and thank you for board members who were able to join us over the past a few weeks. Just again, want to just thank our teachers, thank our schools. Lots of really great feedback from middle schools around the budget item that this board approved last year that created space to add additional planning time. And in our conversations with teachers, the term that has been most, I think, frequently used is life-changing. You know, 20-some years ago, there was a decision made in this district to do away with planning time at the middle level. And through this board's action, improving the budget last year, we were able to bring that middle-level planning back. And so, it's good to recognize you all as a board and recognize when we've done something that's really making a difference in the lives of teachers and kids. So, thank you all for that. And, you know, just the other topics that are coming up is concerns about declining enrollment, its impact on programming, lots of conversation around middle-level teams and middle-level planning, or not middle-level planning, but the middle-school model, and declining enrollment and its impact on that. And then, just also, just as we saw or heard from our elementary school teachers, just increased academic and social-emotional needs of our kids coming out of the pandemic. So, have a lot more visits to make, but just wanted to give you all an update on that. We had an awesome celebration last Friday for Earth Day. Hopefully, you saw, we had a special edition of The Spot in El Punto, celebrating the work that we're doing in regards to sustainability. We have an update this evening on sustainability. We're very excited to present. And on Earth Day, which was a teacher workday, student holiday, kids really took advantage of the day off to take care of the earth. And we know that we had our Centaurus High School Eco Warriors. They connected with the eco-clubs at Boulder High, Monarch High, Peak to Peak, and Fairview. Their goal was to plant 1,200 trees in Boulder County to replenish some of the vegetation lost in the Marshall Fire. Community rallied, and they distributed 2,338 tree saplings that were then planted on Earth Day. And I know my daughter was able to participate, and it was really, really cool. And the best part about it is a student-led initiative. And so, the success was even that much better because our kids led that, and now our community's asking that this is an annual event. So, you know, what a great testament to the leadership of kids across our district. And then, the last update is, you know, board members, we've been discussing the importance of community engagement. And so, I'm excited to announce to the community as we close out the year that we're going to be hosting four community engagement events throughout the month of May. I'll announce our first meeting because it's coming up soon. It's Monday, May 2, at Broomfield High. We'll have an opportunity to engage, learn information about the district, do some Q and A, and just really get us as a governance team out into the community to listen and hear from folks on the ground on, you know, what's going well, what can we do better. You know, board members, those are two really important questions that I often ask, as we always are in trying to get better. And then, we'll have three other meetings, two in Spanish, another one in English, and we'll be announcing those shortly and pushing that communication out to parents. And so, I'd encourage our community to come out if you can. I know May is a busy month, but we'd hope to be able to see you and engage with you as we're coming out of many of the lockdowns of the pandemic. Really look forward to getting out into the community. And that, board members, that is all I have for my comments this evening.
Board members, any questions for Dr. Anderson?
Do you know what time that first community engagement session is happening?
It'll be right on time. I just don't know what that time is. So, we'll have to communicate that back out.
Good answer. Board members, any other questions? Richard?
I just want to appreciate the fact that you're going to do two of them in Spanish. And this is something that's pretty much automatic anymore, you know? In the past, it was like we had to pull teeth to get sessions in Spanish out in the community. But with you, Rob, it's been like automatic. So, thank you.
Anyone else? I just want to say thank you, Dr. Anderson. I think it's time for, after the pandemic and kind of being in lockdown, it feels really good to have the opportunity to go out and visit with our community. And I'm hoping that we can turn this into something that our community expects and knows that we'll be able to engage with them, and I'm really looking forward to that. So, thank you so much for making that happen on a schedule that I know is kind of crazy for everybody. So, appreciate that. So, we'll now proceed to the next item on our agenda, which is public participation. Members of the public who wish to speak at tonight's meeting are asked to sign up prior to noon today by submitting their request to speak during public participation form that can be found on the BVSD website, or by contacting the board secretary, Laura Schaefer. Public participants have the option to attend the meeting in person or join and present their comments via Google Meet. The board respects the rights of the public to speak on matters concerning the operation of the schools. We believe that public comments that are critical of district staff, however, often cause unnecessary harm to those employees and to the education of our students. As a result, we prefer that members of the public share any criticisms of employees in writing with the superintendent, who is responsible for supervising all staff, bless you, and then involving the board as necessary. If you choose instead to address a personnel issue publicly, please understand that the board does not endorse the comments of any speaker, and reminds all who speak that they assume the risk of legal action by district employees in the event the affected employees believe that any comments about them violate legal standards. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask the person to address the board, confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items. Limit your presentation to two minutes. If we go over the first hour, which we will not tonight, public comment will continue at the end of the meeting. If you run out of time or would like to share additional information, you may email the board. Recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks, therefore, should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. This video will be recorded for public viewing in perpetuity. BVSD reserves the right to remove you from a meeting if your video includes material that is inappropriate for the public or BVSD students. You will see a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining. When you have 10 seconds, you will see an orange card. And then, please wrap up your comments. At the end of your two minutes, a timer will sound, and your microphone will be muted. We will begin with our agenda item speakers. And they believe they are all virtual. So, the first one, Laura, do we know if Rosanna Longo Better is going to be speaking or not? There's -- was unclear.
Is Rosanna here? I don't see her, so let's go to the next.
All right. Our next speaker is Ana Lilia Lujan. I think she -- I think you're muted. Hold on a second.
Ana, we can't hear you. It looks like she's going to rejoin, maybe.
All right, let's just wait a minute and see if rejoining helps. We still can't hear.
Ana, we still can't hear you.
We can see you, but we can't hear anything.
Shall we take a couple other public participants and then come back?
Is that all right, Rose, if we?
Let's try one more time.
We'll try one more time. We're still only able to see you, but not hear you. We'll go to Bridget and then come back to Ana. How's that sound? So, our next speaker would be Bridget Moriarty. We cannot hear you, Bridget. Okay. So, what we're going to do is we're going to move on to the speakers who have joined us here, and we will move back to the speakers who are trying to join us virtually while we try to deal with some technical difficulties. So, Andrew or Rose, just give me a thumbs up when we need to move back. All right. So, the first speaker I have is Yadira Silva.
And Yadira will require interpretation, so I'll set the timer for two minutes for her Spanish presentation, and then we will have the interpretation as long as it takes to complete her statement.
Perfect. Welcome, Yadira.
Yes. They have a copy of your statement, so you just go ahead and read what you're reading, and then she'll come back and say it.
Okay. Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Primero que nada, gracias por darme la oportunidad de hablar en esta reunión. Mi nombre es Yadira Silva. Yo soy una madre y líder del Paso Voz Lafayette. Tengo dos hijos en la escuela bilingüe Pioneer y una próxima hija por entrar a preescolar. El Paso Voz es un grupo de padres organizados enfocados en mejorar nuestra comunidad para el bienestar familiar y educativo. Lideramos y abogamos por nuestros hijos y otros niños de la comunidad. Hemos visto de primera mano y aprendido que existe mucha discriminación e inequidad para las familias de los estudiantes que reciben servicio de educación especial en nuestras escuelas. Existen diferentes protocolos para personas de color y aquellos que hablan inglés como primer idioma. A nosotros queremos y nos merecemos cambios en las políticas del distrito para que haya igualdad para todos en nuestra comunidad. Hoy estamos enfrente de ustedes para abogar para más fondos en el departamento de servicios de traducción y que se hagan cambios en las políticas para hacer un distrito escolar equitativo. Gracias por la oportunidad de escuchar nuestras peticiones. Gracias.
All right. Good afternoon. Thanks for giving me the time to speak. My name is Yadira Silva. I am a mother leader in El Paso Voz Lafayette. I have two children at Escuela Bilingüe Pioneer and another one about to enter preschool. El Paso Voz is a group of parents who are organized and focused on making our community better for the well-being of our families. We lead and advocate for our children, other children, and for the community. We've seen firsthand and have learned that there's a lot of discrimination and inequity for the families of students that receive special education services. There are different protocols for people of color and for those who speak English as a first language. We want and we deserve changes to the policies of the district so that there's equality for everyone in our community. Today, we are standing in front of you to advocate for more funding for the translation services department and for there to be changes to the policies to make a district, our school district, more equitable. Thanks for the chance to speak and for listening to our petition.
Next, we have Maria Guadalupe Cardosa, who I believe has four minutes.
Hola, mi nombre es María Guadalupe Cardosa. Soy una líder del Paso Voz Lafayette. Tengo siete hijos que pertenecen al distrito escolar de Boulder. Gracias por permitirme compartir mi testimonio sobre mi experiencia muy impactante que mi hijo recibió los servicios de educación especial. Yo y mi hijo, mi hijo estuvo en la escuela Birch en el 2018. Me contactó para informarme que mi hijo estaba castigado y que no podía, estaba expulsado de la escuela. Cuando llegamos a casa, me dijo que estaba castigado y que le decían cosas de desprecio. No supe qué decirle más que, hijo mío, ¿qué han hecho? ¿Qué mala comunicación le dieron de ti? La información fue pasada a los trabajadores sociales del condado de Boulder. Ellos me llamaron sin cordialidad. Me contactaron, me contaron todas las cosas malas de Nicolás, que hicieron muchas preguntas durante dos horas. Si supieran el estrés que ponen en mi vida y en la vida de mi hijo, no es, yo sé que mi hijo no era un criminal y una mala persona. Mi hijo viene de una madre migrante con principios de lucha con igualdad. También llamé al departamento de educación especial y me decepcioné. No recibí la ayuda que merecía. Quiero decir, si no me hubiera decidido, si no me hubiera defendido en ese momento, mi vida había sido muy, muy difícil. Algo que no es legal para mí porque conozco mis derechos civiles. Es que los documentos de educación especial con el IEP me fueron entregados en inglés, y cada página no fue interpretada. No sabía la meta, no sabía los logros, ni cómo trabajar las estrategias desde casa. Hay muchas dificultades, cosas frustrantes. Muchas gracias.
Hi, my name is María Guadalupe Cardosa. I'm a leader of El Paso Voz Lafayette. I have seven students in the district, Boulder Valley School District. Thank you for allowing me to share my testimony tonight about my experience that I had with my son. My son receives special education services at Birch in 2018. A day, one day, the school contacted me to inform me that my son was being suspended and that I needed to go pick him up at school. When we got home, he told me he was being punished and that he was, he had been treated with not kind words. I did not know what to say to my son. I asked him what he had done, and I had no communication from the school.
Followed by
The information was shared with the social worker from Boulder County, and they called me. They were not nice to me. They told me very bad things about Nicolás, and they were questioning me for two hours. If people knew the stress that this caused in my life, my son is not a criminal. My son is not a bad person. My son comes from
Welcome to Google Meet.
An immigrant mother with principles that is fighting for equal treatment. I also called the special education department, and I was very disappointed because I did not receive the help that I deserved. I want to say that if I hadn't defended myself in that moment, my life had been very unhappy.
You're muted because a lot of people are on this call. Press star six to unmute. The call is being recorded.
I know my rights based on my IEP documents. The IEP documents also were given to me in English, and all the pages were not translated. I didn't know where were his goals and how he was doing in the IEP. There's many difficulties, and I'm very frustrated. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Damari Yanez.
Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Damari Yanez, y gracias por darme la oportunidad de estar esta tarde aquí. Vivo en la ciudad de Lafayette. Tengo dos niñas de seis y ocho años que existen a la Escuela Bilingüe Pioneer. Soy líder del Paso Voz Lafayette. Una de mis hijas recibe terapia de lenguaje. Para eso, me reuní con la terapeuta de la BLAB que elabora en la Escuela Bilingüe Pioneer. Hicimos el plan individualizado de educación para ella, en el cual acordamos que se trabajaría en el salón, e incluso que esa misma persona que hizo el plan sería la terapeuta. A medida avanzaba el plan, me di cuenta que mi niña salía del salón, y la terapeuta era otra persona, no la que había hecho el plan conmigo. Les comuniqué mi molestia vía correo electrónico. Me hicieron saber las razones, pero ninguna de ellas era una justificación para mí. Porque estoy seguro que si mi niña no fuera latina, no hubiera sido tratada de esta manera. Gracias.
Good afternoon. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here this afternoon. My name is Damari Yanez. I live in Lafayette. I have two girls, six and eight years old, that they go to Escuela Bilingüe Pioneer. I am a leader of El Paso Voz Lafayette. My daughter receives special ed services in speech therapy. I met with the speech pathologist that works at Escuela Bilingüe Pioneer. We did the IEP for her. We made a deal in how they were going to work in the classroom and that she would be her speech pathologist. One day, my daughter came to home and said that they were taking her out of the classroom to receive her speech therapies, and that another therapy, another speech pathologist was giving her the therapies without asking me first. I let the school know that I was not okay with this through an email. They let me know the reasons why they had done that, but I don't find this acceptable because they did not ask me if I was okay with this change. I am part of my daughter's IEP too, and I'm sure that this would not have happened if my daughter was not Latina. Thank you.
Raquel Lopez.
Buenas tardes. De antemano quiero dar las gracias por la oportunidad de darnos, para participar esta tarde, el poder hablar y poder ser escuchadas. Este, mi nombre es Raquel López. Soy madre líder de la comunidad de Lafayette con el Paso Voz, porque me interesa estar al tanto de lo que ocurre en mi comunidad y ser la voz para los padres que no pueden levantar la suya. Tengo dos hijos dentro del distrito escolar del Valle de Boulder. El mayor está en el grado 11 y el menor está en tercer grado en Pioneer. Nuestro grupo, El Paso Voz Lafayette, compartimos una encuesta con la comunidad sobre sus experiencias personales con los servicios de educación especial, y vemos la falta de inconsistencia para la comunidad. A los padres no siempre se les da la opción en qué idioma debe realizarse la evaluación de educación especial para su hijo, y no todos los padres entienden lo que significan las siglas IEP. Gracias.
Good afternoon. First, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to participate and have this turn to speak and to be listened. My nombre, my name is Raquel López. I'm a mother leader of the community de Lafayette con el Paso Voz, because I'm interested in what's happening in the community and to be the voice of the parents that don't have a voice. I have two students inside Boulder Valley. My oldest is in the 11th grade in Centaurus High School, and the youngest is in third grade at Pioneer. Our group, El Paso Voz Lafayette, we share a survey with the community about their experiences, personal experiences, about the special education services. We see the inconsistency in the community and how all different places the IPs are treated. Parents not always are given the option in what language the evaluation should be, in what language special ed is going to do the evaluations for their kids. Not all the parents understand what IEP means. Thank you.
Next, we have Maria Mata Santoyo.
Buenas tardes. Muchas gracias por la oportunidad de escucharnos esta tarde. Mi nombre es María G. Mata. Soy una líder del grupo El Paso Voz Lafayette, porque me encanta luchar por mi comunidad y estar bien informada. Tengo dos hijas, una ya graduada de la universidad y otra que pertenece a Angoville. Para continuar con los resultados de nuestra encuesta, los documentos de importancia crítica que reciben los padres no siempre están en su primer idioma, ni cada página siempre se interpreta verbalmente. Las escuelas no siguen un marco de tiempo constante para enviar documentos importantes a los padres en su idioma principal antes o después de las reuniones de educación especial. Gracias. Gracias.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to list, to allow me to speak this afternoon. My name is María G. Mata and I'm a leader of el Grupo El Paso Boys Lafayette because I love fighting for my community and to be informed. I have two daughters, one already graduated college and the other one is at Anjovain Middle School. To keep talking about the results from our survey, the documents, the important documents that the parents receive not always are in their first language and almost not all the pages are interpreted verbally. The surveys, the schools don't follow the timeframes in a constant way to allow the parents to be informed about the IEP meetings, special ed meetings. Thank you.
Next we have Carisa Sánchez.
Buenas tardes. Muchas gracias por escucharnos esta noche. Mucho gusto con todos ustedes. Mi nombre es Carisa Sánchez y soy líder del Paso Boys Lafayette desde hace un año. Tengo dos niños en el distrito, uno está en Centauros y otra pequeña está en Anjovain. Pertenezco a este grupo porque me importa el bienestar de nuestras familias y de toda mi comunidad. Gracias nuevamente por la oportunidad para hablar esta tarde. No todos los padres entienden los documentos, los intérpretes también profesionales no siempre están presentes en las reuniones del equipo de Educación Especial. No todos los padres saben que pueden traer a un defensor en sus reuniones del equipo de Educación Especial. Estos resultados de nuestra encuesta muestran los obstáculos y las desigualdades para los niñes y sus padres que continúan en el distrito. Gracias.
Good afternoon. My name is Carisa Sánchez and I'm a leader of El Paso Boys Lafayette. I started in the Bos El Paso a year ago and I have two students, one in Anjovain and the other one in Centauros. I am part of this group because I care about the well-being of our families and our community. Thank you again for the opportunity to talk this afternoon. Not all the parents understand the documents. The professional interpreters are not always present during the meetings with the special education team. Not all the parents know that they can bring an advocate for the meetings with the special education team. These results from our survey show the obstacles and the inequities for the kids and their parents in the district. Thank you.
Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Trini Nieves. Soy líder comunitaria del Paso Boys Lafayette, al cual orgullosamente desde hace un año pertenezco. Me he dado cuenta desde, de todas las necesidades que existen en nuestra comunidad y me alegra saber que existen personas buenas como ustedes que están aquí para ayudarnos. Tengo tres hijos, uno actualmente asiste a Monarch High School y mis otros dos hijos se graduaron de la misma. Antes de continuar con la siguiente petición, solo quiero agradecerles una vez más por el espacio que nos brindan al dejar que expresemos todas nuestras necesidades y lo que merecemos. Todavía nos preocupa que no hay suficientes fondos para que el Departamento de Servicios de Traducción brinde de manera adecuada y equitativa los servicios de traducción e interpretación necesarios y requeridos. Es una emergencia abordar el hecho de que los padres continúan recibiendo esta información del Distrito Escolar que no entienden. Es una obligación que el distrito y todos los departamentos manden información en donde los padres puedan entender, como se dice en la División de Derechos Civiles del Departamento de Justicia de los Estados Unidos. Merecemos entender todas las ayudas que hay para los niños y todos los documentos, incluyendo los borradores de los IPs, boletines, mensajes, etc. Es nuestro derecho. En 2020 solicitamos que se proporcionen más fondos para el Departamento de Servicios de Traducción. Nuevamente pedimos eso el día de hoy. Muchas gracias.
Good afternoon. My name is Trini Nieves. I am a leader, community leader of El Paso Boys Lafayette and I'm proudly part of this group since last year. I have noticed of the needs of our community and I'm very happy that we have good people like this group today willing to help us. I have three students, one at Monarch High School and my other two already graduated from the same school. Before going on, I want to say thank you once more for giving us the space to allow us to express ourselves and express our needs and what we deserve. We're still very worried that there are not enough funds for the translation services department so that that department can bring help and equity to the services of translation and interpretation needed and required. It's an emergency that we take this so the parents can keep receiving the information from the school district that they don't understand. It's an obligation for the district and all the departments that send information that all the parents can understand like it says in the Civil Rights Division of the Department of Justice of the United States of America. We deserve to understand all the helps that our kids can receive and all the documents, including drafts of the IP newsletters, messages. It's our right. In 2020, we ask to please give more funding for the translations department and we are asking for that again. Thank you.
Next we have Yuriana Chávez.
Buenas tardes. Muchas gracias por permitirnos estar con ustedes hoy. Mi nombre es Yuriana Chavira. Tengo cuatro hijos que pertenecen a la Escuela Pioneer. Soy una madre líder del Paso Boys Lafayette. Pertenezco a esta organización porque quiero luchar por mi comunidad para que sea más equitativa y fuerte. Es nuestro derecho, el derecho de todos los padres, independientemente del idioma que hablen, recibir los documentos de la misma manera oportuna. Actualmente, la política del distrito establece que una recomendación o expectativa que los padres reciban sus documentos como borradores del IEP cinco días antes de la reunión del equipo de Educación Especial. Vemos cómo esta recomendación o expectativa conduce a mucha discriminación e inequidad. Por lo tanto, pedimos que ustedes cambien las políticas para indicar que es un requisito de parte de los maestros, no es una recomendación o expectativa. Todas las familias merecen ser tratadas con equidad, no a la discriminación personal ni a la discriminación de los maestros. Gracias.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for allowing us to speak to you guys today. My name is Yuriana Chavira. I have four students that go to Escuela Bilingüe Pioneer. I am a leader mom from El Paso Boys Lafayette. I am part of this organization because I want to fight for my community and I want my community to be more equitable and strong. It's our right, it's the right of the parents. It doesn't depend in, it's not about the, the language they speak. They should receive all the documents in the same way. Right now, the policy of the district says that it's a recommendation or an expectation that parents receive their documents, their draft from the IP five days before the meeting with the special education team. We see like how this recommendation or expectation brings discrimination and inequality in the district. Because of this, we are asking for you to change this policy to make it a requisite from the teachers, not a recommendation. All the families deserve to be treated with equity. No to the discrimination and no to the discrimination from the teachers. Thank you.
Next we have Zahira García.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Zahira García. Gracias por la oportunidad de tenernos aquí con ustedes esta noche. Soy madre del Grupo Paso Lafayette desde hace dos años. Me gusta estar en este grupo porque me gusta apoyar a mis hijos en todo momento y este... Apoyarlos a las manos que no pueden estar aquí. Tengo tres hijos, uno recién graduado de la escuela Centauros, uno en el grado nueve de Centauros y uno en la escuela Sánchez, en el grado cuarto. El sitio web del distrito incluye las palabras excelencia y equidad. No estamos viendo equidad. Aprendimos que ustedes tienen el poder de hacer los cambios de política necesarios para hacer un distrito que refleje esas palabras de excelencia y equidad. Cuando podemos esperar a que hagan esos cambios. Ya hemos esperado demasiado. Esto es urgente. Gracias.
Good afternoon. My name is Zahira García. Thank you for the opportunity to talk tonight. I am a leader of the Grupo El Paso Boys Lafayette. I, I like being in this group because I like supporting my kids in every situation and to help other families that are not able to be here tonight. I have three boys. One just graduated from Centauros High School. Another one is a ninth grader in Centauros and I have one in fourth grade at Sánchez. On the BBSD website, you have the words excellence and equity. We are not seeing equity. We learned from you guys that you guys have the power to make the changes to policy, the changes needed, so the district can reflect those words of excellence and equity. When are we gonna see these changes? We have waited enough. This is urgent. Thank you.
So next we have Elizabeth Pineda.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Elizabeth Pineda. Muchas gracias por permitirme hacer realidad este, estar en frente de ustedes. Unas personas muy importantes para el Distrito Escolar y para la comunidad. Yo pertenezco a liderazgo comunitario en El Paso Boys de Lafayette para el bienestar de los estudiantes, para todos. Al igual para mis dos hijos que pertenecen a la escuela Alicia Sánchez. Esperamos ver los cambios y las soluciones para hacer un distrito escolar más equitativo. Vamos a seguir observando y escuchando las voces de todos los padres y los estudiantes. Muchas gracias.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Elizabeth Pineda. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight in front of you guys. So important people for the district and for the community. I am part of the leadership of comunidad El Paso Boys Lafayette for the well-being of all the students, all the students and my two kids that they go to Alicia Sánchez. We wait and we hope to see the changes and the solutions so we can see a more equitable district. We will keep watching and listening to the voices of all the parents and the students. Thank you.
Next we have Natalia Ortiz Cardosa. Who I think has, I can't tell, or a four minutes? Oh, she gave up. Not Kimberly Darling? Virtual, right. So Michael, we'll do Michael and Sean and then we're gonna take a break to see if we can reset for the virtual. Well, we'll still start with Michael. Who has four minutes?
Good evening. Superintendent Anderson, members of the board, Boulder Valley staff, colleagues and guests. My name is Michael Guidirelli. I'm a school bus driver for Boulder Valley School District. About three to four years ago, I stood here to ask for your help. Boulder Valley School District was the largest school district in the state of Colorado without bus cameras. And many times, bus drivers could not give riders consequences for bullying, destruction of property, or failure to follow safety procedures because we had no proof. You listened to my request for cameras and we are very grateful. It has helped to even the playing field in our efforts to transport our children safely to and from school. Today, I stand before you to ask for your help once again. Boulder Valley School District is experiencing an unprecedented turnover rate in certain Classification C categories. This information is from the district. Childcare, seventy-five percent turnover last year. Food service, thirty-eight percent turnover. And school bus drivers, thirty-five percent turnover last year. As a school bus driver for over eight years with Boulder Valley, I have witnessed some of the consequences of the high turnover rate of bus drivers. We have management, mechanics, dispatchers, schedulers, and bus driver trainers doing routes when they should be doing the work they were hired to do. And as a consequence, are falling behind in their work schedules due to having to drive school buses. I dare say that Boulder Valley School District's management would be under a greater deal of stress if Rob Price and members of, I'm sure Rob's a good driver, members of finance, payroll, and HR had to spend time driving buses versus doing the work they were hired to do. The contract between the district and Boulder Valley Classified Employees Association lists ten school districts we are to compare ourselves with regarding compensation. Our president of BBCEA, Sean Chamitaro, has found that Boulder Valley's administrators are in the top ten percent compensation compared to the ten school districts we compare ourselves with. And Boulder Valley's school teachers are compensated above any of the other ten school districts we compare ourselves with. Classification C employees were found to be in the range of forty to sixty percentile on average compared with the ten other school districts. We are not asking to be the best paid as our administrators and teachers are. Even if we were only brought up to the seventy-fifth percentile, that would mean about, on average, three dollars an hour increase in wages to our employees. In the best of times, it's a challenge to get enough people hired and trained to drive a school bus. These are not the best of times. We need competitive wages to reduce our costs and turnover ratios. I thank you again for listening. We need your help and ideas to reduce the unsustainable turnover rate of school bus drivers and other Classification C employees. Thank you.
And next we have Sean Chamitaro. You gave him the time, okay. So let's try Ana, should we try Ana? Ana Lilia Lujan. See if we can hear you. Oh, that's sounding promising.
Buenas tardes.
We can hear you.
Sí. Okay. Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Ana Lilia Lujan. Y voy a hablar sobre la necesidad que tenemos de mejorar o cambiar los programas de IELDIE. Sabemos por todas las estadísticas que hemos visto que nuestros niños que tienen como segundo idioma el inglés hace años, décadas que no alcanzan la proficiencia en inglés. Y desde que empieza la escuela empezamos a ver es del gap que tanto hablamos, que tanto se habla cada año escolar. Que pasa, se nota la diferencia entre los niños y sus, entre nuestros niños y los compañeros que el primer idioma es inglés. que el primer idioma es inglés. Por eso, mi petición a la mesa directiva es que tomen acción lo más cuanto posible y le den a nuestros niños una oportunidad real de superar ese. Muestren que el slogan que tiene el distrito es real. Hagamos, hagamos confiar en ustedes. A poder estar en casa o en el trabajo y saber que nuestros niños son tratados con igualdad, respeto, y sobre todo, una, brindarles una educación adaptada a las necesidades de ellos. Les pido por favor que tomen cartas en el asunto de los programas de ESL para ver a nuestros niños graduándose de la universidad. Muchas gracias.
Is there a translator for her? Let me see if somebody online got that. Do any of my translators that are online, did any of you catch that? It doesn't sound like anybody's responding to me. Should I move on and then come back and see if there's a translator?
We're getting them online.
Okay. So, we'll move on to Bridget, and then we'll come back for the translation for Anna. Does that work for people? All right, so the next person is Bridget Moriarty. Bridget, if you can hear us, I think you need to unmute. It looks like you're still muted. Now you're good. Go ahead. Okay, we're going to take a, hopefully just a, how long, Andrew, 10 minutes, five minutes? A five to 10 minute break to reboot the system to see if we can get the audio to come in a little better. So, I apologize. Stick around so that we can have our board comment after this. And we appreciate your patience, and we'll see you shortly. We're back in session, and I think we're going to start with Anna's interpreter.
Testing 1212. Can you guys hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Thank you.
Perfect. So, we're going back to Anna, correct?
Yes, please.
Okay. My name is Anna, and I would like to talk about the option of better ELD classes for our students. As we know, data has proven that ESL students have for decades not shown the same amount of performance as native students. We can begin to see the gap early on their education, and I would like to speak, not only to speak about this every year, but to see a change. We see a big difference between the performance of English-native speakers and students that belong to ESL programs. We are asking that you act soon. We are asking that you provide real opportunities for our kids and that you let us see that your slogan is real. Please make us trust you. Either if we are at home or at work, we want to see our children treated with equality and respect. We would like to see changes, a bettering, the ESL program. Thank you, and we would like to see them soon.
Thank you. So now, I think we're going to try Bridget Moriarty.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi, I'm Bridget Moriarty. I have a first grader at UniHill, and I'm here to support the expansion and full funding of bilingual education. Also, just want to name that this is something that many people, especially the Latino community, have been advocating strongly for for many years. It's time to take action now and respect the clear recommendations that have been made multiple times. We need to expand the 50-52A immersion model through 12th grade. This is research-based best practice for being culturally responsive and inclusive and for reducing achievement gaps for students who enter school with limited English proficiency. We can do this by extending the program at UniHill through K-8, or we can offer middle and high school programs which have the 50-52A immersion model. This needs to be sufficiently funded and staffed so that those programs can be implemented effectively. And the report from the Latino Parent Committee has offered those clear recommendations. We also need support that is culturally inclusive, including special education, gifted and talented, social and emotional learning, and other support services. The way I see this is that this becomes a win-win. Or if you're familiar with design thinking, a curb cut, where you can create solutions that meet the specific needs of some individuals but also support others. In education, there's many examples of this. Oregon Gillingham began as a reading program for intervention, and now most teachers use this as a tier-one or tier-two instruction. Universal Design for Learning is another example that supported the integration of special ed students into gen ed classrooms, and now most teachers use this as best practice. But bilingual education is not only an opportunity to support, respect, and empower the Spanish-dominated members within our community, but it's also an opportunity to create more inclusive spaces and allowing native English speakers to become bilingual along the way. I think we can create this curb cut, this win-win for our entire community, making our whole, making our whole community within BBSD more inclusive and empowered. This is a question of equitable access to a free and fair education. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Daniel Slichter.
Hi, my name is Daniel Slichter. I'm the parent of a fourth grader and a first grader at UniHill Elementary School. I am speaking here today in support of expanding a 50-50 bilingual education system through 12th grade, K through 12, and fully funding and supporting this so it can succeed. Bilingual education, in this true 50-50 sense, has been shown by research to be much more effective at helping people learning English as a second language than the pull-out ESL model, which is typically used. And the district should, would do well to have its bilingual education programs be more standardized across schools and also adopt research-based best practices such as this when, when carrying forward. I also want to point out there are additional knock-on effects. If one is having a 50-50 bilingual K through 12 system, you now have Spanish-speaking teachers and support staff at all levels who can help with many of the issues that, for example, were documented by El Paso Vos La Falle earlier about being able to communicate with parents in Spanish, providing role models and cultural examples for all students so that teachers are not predominantly only native English-speaking. And crucially, providing English literacy and Spanish literacy, which, as we can see from this evening's meeting and the need for translators, is a key feature for all of us in the modern United States to be able to be literate in both languages. And so, I recommend that BBSD adopt this more forceful strategy through K through 12 education for 50-50 bilingual. Thank you.
And last, we have Kimberly Darling.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Darling. I've been a special education para, a BBSD high school for four years. I love my job, but I don't have time to talk about that here. Para educators gets a chance to really know each individual student and create relationships other educators miss out on. Our schedules change daily. We must be adaptable and flexible and are the first responders to protect ours and other students, our coworkers, and ourselves. We assist students who have emotional and physical needs, which can be dangerous and difficult mentally and physically. As a BBSD para, I have had a concussion that had me unable to do anything but sleep for two weeks and had me out of work for almost two months. I've also had shoulder surgery. This doesn't include the concussions for my coworkers or the other injuries like lacerations, welts, or bruising, and the mental toll from hits, kicks, bites, pinching, or objects thrown. All the while, paras are some of the lowest-paid employees within the district. To make it clear, the highest-paid paras working full-time make less than $35,000 a year. Many of us love our jobs, but we are not paid enough. The teachers we work with, the parents that we, that see our impact on their students, and our bosses recognize us. But the best, but the district does not pay us as much as a first-year teacher. Yet, very few teachers have the possibilities of injuries being part of their job descriptions, unlike paras. One of my most dedicated coworkers, who is extremely knowledgeable and talented in her job, has been within, with the district for 30 years and is still, still does not earn a livable wage. We've been told that we are the backbone of special education, and the district could not go one day without us. Personally, unless massive pay changes are made, I'll be forced to make the decision to leave. I'm considered full-time, worked summer school, and made less than $20,000 this year. I'm currently working three jobs, and being a para, the job I love the most pays the least. I'm also a mom and trying to manage my household. The verbal appreciation and the benefits are great, but they don't pay the bills. Thank you.
So I think that concludes our public participation for the night. And we will move on to board communication. Board members, who wants to go first? Anybody? Nicole?
I just want to say thank you to the members from El Paso Vos that came here tonight to speak and share concerns about our special education programming in the district and to those that participated online tonight about sharing thoughts and concerns around bilingual education. It's great to see you in, on the video screen, but really outstanding to see you guys here in person and adding the energy to this room. I appreciate, I really appreciate that. And congratulations to Dr. Anderson on his two hard-earned awards. Congratulations.
Beth?
Yeah, I just kind of want to echo those same sentiments. I want to thank everyone that came out tonight and also online. It's incredible to, to hear your stories and provide context. You know, we're wrestling with complex issues and difficult conversations, and having context and stories is so powerful. So, thank you for, for sharing that with us. It's, it's, it helps very, very much. Yes, and I agree. Congratulations, Dr. Anderson. That is great, a double whammy, right, in a row. You're an excellent communicator, times two.
Richard?
This is pretty clumsy for me because I can speak Spanish, and I have a Spanish audience there. Pero muchas gracias para la, El Paso Vos La Falle por estar aquí esta noche. Thank you very much, El Paso Vos, for being here tonight. Me gusta muchísimo las camisas que traen puestas. I love your shirts. They look beautiful. Something that just struck me as El Paso Vos was making the presentation is, I felt very humbled as they were talking, you know, because they were so polite as they were speaking. So, I felt like, wow. As opposed to maybe sometimes when I hear other people talk, it's not polite, you know, but muchas gracias por su humildad que tuvieron usted esta noche. I just have a couple of questions, Dr. Anderson. I know we can't do a whole lot with an incident that happened in 2018, but it's just a picture of what could happen in the future, you know, if we don't do something to stop that. And it's almost like when we were doing the ESROs and, and now with special ed. If, if something happens, you know, they call social services. It's almost like a ticket, I guess, if you will, and a parent gets visited, and all kinds of problems happen after that. So, but I know we can't do nothing about 2018, but I'm thinking that we might be able to do something to prevent things like that happening. Another thing is the use of acronyms, I think, is just all over the place in our, in our profession. And I think that at some point, we need to either clarify what those acronyms are or not use them. And I understand, you know, when parents are concerned about not even understanding what an IEP is, you know, because it's, it's there, you know, and we're so used to using IEP and not necessarily talking about Individualized Education Plan. The advocates, I know that, that our special ed department, I know that they do encourage advocates to be at staffings, et cetera. And I just want to make sure that we continue doing that. And I think at some point, I'm not sure where, when, but I know that we're looking at policies. I think we need to look at IGBA again and look at that one particular comment that they were talking about. I looked at it, and it does say encourage, you know, like they were saying so. And I know that federal law does use the word where it's, should be, like, information going home to parents that speak another language should be in a language that they understand. So, just a comment. Pero muchas gracias. And I want to thank all the people that were online too for, for, especially those, those individuals that were addressing bilingual education and our speakers around, our bus drivers, et cetera. I know that that's difficult. I know we've had that problem forever in terms of bus drivers leaving the profession and, or going someplace else because they pay more. And I'm hoping that through our negotiated agreement that we can come to a place where, where we'll make them happy. And, Dr. Anderson, congratulations. You are a communicator, a great communicator, but you're a bold communicator. Thank you.
Lisa?
Yeah, I really appreciate the conversation tonight around the intersections with sped and ELL. I think navigating an IEP can be difficult for any parent, and we want to make sure that we are supporting our Latino families and all of our families who have caregivers who don't speak English or who are learning English, especially if we're going to offer meaningful kinds of informed consent and engagement processes. I've heard tonight that we aren't offering IEP docs in translation about IEP evaluations not being given in the correct language for a student who is a non-native speaker and about a lack of interpreters in meetings. And then also independently of tonight, I've heard from some other members in our Latino families about concerns generally with interpretation service, both large-scale and one-on-one. So I hope we can hear more soon from you about what we're doing to remedy these concerns. And also, finally, one of our parents spoke about having CPS called on her family to deal with a problem with her son, who had both an IEP plan and was an English-language learner. And I think that story is a particular concern. I want to make sure we're communicating to our schools about when and why we call CPS and making sure it's not a knee-jerk response. And congratulations.
I'll just add my thanks to the speakers. Thank you for coming in and making time this evening to come spend your precious time from, away from your families and share your stories with us. Look forward to a continued partnership with El Paso Vos and really appreciate you all coming in. Appreciate also the comments around negotiations that are going on. It is heartbreaking to me because, as, as you know as a bus driver and as our para professionals know, your worth is not measured by the amount of money that we're allowed to give you from the state. And it's, it's just, it's heartbreaking every time we go through this. And I know the cost of living in Boulder is exorbitant, and I know that the odds and the obstacles you face every day for our students are enormous, but yet you show up every day and serve our students and serve our district. And for that, I know, I already heard that words only go so far, but we are eternally grateful for everything that you do for our students and for our district. And, you know, hope we can all join arms in trying to figure out how we continue to advocate for better funding and for livable wages for all of our workers. So, thank you for coming, and thank you for being online for that because it, we really couldn't do it without you. And I know, again, that doesn't pay the bills, but thank you for being here and thanks for advocating. And Beth and I went to a little bit of the negotiations yesterday with the para professionals. And again, the part of the way they do that is to share stories, and those stories are heartbreaking. And I'm sure there's heartbreaking stories from bus drivers, and I'm sure there's heartbreaking stories every day of the hard work that's being done. So, a heartfelt thanks from the board. And we'll continue to partner together and try to see if we can solve this problem. So, thank you very much. And again, Rob, I'll be the last to add the congratulations. It has been a challenging year, and you've had a lot to communicate, but you've done it with grace and represented us well. it with grace and represented us well. And thank you so much because I don't know where we'd be if we didn't have your skills and your leadership. So appreciate it. Thank you. So I think we will now move on. Anything else, Gita?
Yes, something came to mind. First, thank you, everyone who spoke. It was good to hear from you all, and it's good to see you all in person. That's wonderful. And congratulations, Dr. Anderson. The issue with the child who, there was a report to child protection. It's really important, I think, that we educate our families on what the mandatory reporting law says because I would bet you that most families have no idea, but the bar for reporting is extremely low and that school personnel are required by law to make a report. So I think that parents need to understand that so they at least understand why it's happening. It doesn't keep it from being horribly upsetting, but it's important to understand.
All right, anything else for board communication? All right, I think then we will now move on to Rob Price and Gita. Is that right? I didn't remember seeing Gita here. Oh, there she is, who will be doing the presentation on our sustainability. Thank you.
Ready? All right. Good evening, President Gebhardt, members of the board, Dr. Anderson. Tonight, Dr. Gita Carroll and I will be providing an update on our Sustainability Action Plan we first presented this to you in September of last year. So this is what's leading us from a sustainability standpoint for the next five years. Want to start off with some really great news. Earlier this month, the U.S. Department of Energy recognized BVSD as one of eight school districts in the nation to be honored by the Efficient and Healthy Schools Campaign and the Biden-Harrison Administration for Sustainability Work Related to Energy Efficiency and Creating Healthy Learning Environments. BVSD was awarded Best in Class for our team approach for supporting strategic investments and notable achievement in efficient heating, ventilation, air conditioning for indoor environmental quality. We've been invited to participate in an upcoming webinar that Gita will lead for us to share our experience with other school districts. So very exciting. We did not see that coming, but it was good news when we got it. As you know, we have a longstanding commitment towards sustainability in both our daily operations and within our curriculum. In 2009, the district created the first sustainability management system, which was followed by a sustainable energy plan in 2013, when the district exceeded our initial energy goals ahead of schedule. BVSD recently launched the newest iteration of the plan and the progress report celebrating more than 10 years of work and highlighting progress, including a 13% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions in the last four years, in the last five years, and a 24% improvement in energy use, even when adding square footage and air conditioning. You've heard that a lot. We're very proud of that. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Gita Carroll. She'll go into more detail about what we've achieved since really September timeframe and where we're heading. So, Gita?
Thank you. Okay. So this new plan has an updated vision that we will be all together for all students and the planet, which of course complements our strategic plan vision, and an updated mission to be a leader in whole district sustainability, create healthy learning environments, and experiences that equip all students and staff with the knowledge and skills to create more equitable and sustainable communities. The new plan also looks different than our last plans. The previous plans focused primarily on operations, and this new plan covers all four of BVSD's impact systems as outlined on this slide. So we know that it's not just about technical solutions and that as a K-12 school district, we need to address all four of these areas to fully address sustainability. Each of the strategic priority areas has an overarching goal that I'll review with you tonight and three to five supporting goals. Each area also includes indicators and measures that we're using to assess our progress. The plan, similar to previous plans, is targeting the next five years. So now I'm going to walk through the overarching goal in each area and then give you some update on our progress from the past year, from really earlier this fall when we presented this plan to you. The action plan is also included in board docs. So the first strategic priority is leadership, where the overarching goal here is to collect and report consistent data at all of our schools related to healthy, equitable, and sustainable best practices. The first supporting goal was to create a cross-sector sustainability advisory group to oversee our progress and continuous improvement related to aspects of the plan. So as an update, the committee was finalized in the fall and had its first meeting in March. The group members are listed here on this slide and consist of key leaders and decision-makers from representing all of our communities, who will make suggestions and give advice to the board in order to assist in decision-making. The group will meet quarterly. The next meeting is actually next week on Tuesday, May 3. And during the first few meetings, the group is solidifying its structure and creation of bylaws. The next goal is to develop a dashboard that allows each school to understand their level of participation and implementation and our sustainability goals. So we have been working on this, and we hope to release the first draft of it to schools through VisLab later this spring. So what schools will be able to see, you're going to see a few components here of the dashboard, are their Green BVSD Report Card. That's going to highlight features such as whether they have a garden or a green team, what their recycling numbers are, trees saved, and things like that. Schools are going to be able to look at how their energy, or how these same metrics compare to other like schools, so of how many middle schools have gardens as compared to that and other BVSD schools. And schools are going to be able to look at their energy, water, and waste data and how they compare to other BVSD schools. The third goal in this section is to review and amend operational policies and practices. So this is something staff is continuing to do, particularly this year in the areas of indoor air quality and procurement. The fourth goal is to create a professional learning plan for 100% of faculty and staff to support deeper learning and practices related to sustainability. So this year, the focus has been to introduce staff to this new Green BVSD Action Plan. And so we gave a presentation to DLT earlier in the fall. We had a professional development for schools in April, and we've got an upcoming professional development for custodial staff. Our next strategic priority is facilities and operations. The overarching goal here is to continue to pursue net-zero energy and reduce greenhouse gases by 14% from the updated 2018-19 baseline. We're also hoping to develop a water management plan that models responsible water use. Okay, some of the supporting goals here are, first, to integrate green building guiding principles into the facility assessment process and decision-making related to capital expenditures to ensure that we're meeting sustainability targets. The work here has been completed and is ongoing, so our staff did update our technical specifications to include the new goals of this plan. And we've also included sustainability data points in the assessment work that happened over the fall. The next goal is to pursue zero waste by maintaining a 50% diversion rate and streamlining our data collection system. So I'm excited to announce that Angivine Middle School resumed their Green Star launch activities in February after a two-year delay caused by COVID. Green Star, as many of you know, is our comprehensive zero-waste program in partnership with EcoCycle. So student teams at Angivine of sixth and seventh graders who are working to address environmental issues met this spring to determine goals and next steps for finally making this happen at the school, and they began composting in March. Angivine is the last school in the city of Lafayette to become green school. So because of this spring launch, now all public schools in the city of Lafayette can realize opportunities to save natural resources and protect the environment by practicing best zero waste from preschool all the way through graduation. The third goal in this section is to develop a balanced water management plan and decrease water by 5%. As an update, we do have synthetic fields at almost all of our secondary schools now, and we've added more and more zero escaping throughout the district, such as the picture on this slide, which is just out front in the ed center. And these types of projects save us water and money year after year, once they're put in place. The fourth area is to reduce emissions of transportation. And of course, you know, we've had our first electric school bus, which we got last year, and we have eight more on the way. So we're going to have a total of nine electric school buses next school year, which is really exciting. And the fifth goal is to decrease energy use intensity of the district to 55 from 62.2, which is where we are now. These slides show that our energy use through last fiscal year, which continues to trend downward, although we had a slight increase in fiscal year '21 when we returned to normal operations post the pandemic shutdown. And actually, the top chart shows our Energy Star score, so on average as a district. So as that increased, that shows an improvement in energy savings. We also now have a new Sustainability Operations Group that's going to be meeting quarterly and reporting on trends in water, waste, and energy. All right, our next strategic priority is curriculum and instruction. The overarching goal here is that all of our students will have meaningful and developmentally appropriate experiences to develop sustainable knowledge, values, and behavior. So this section in particular was created to support the goals and outcomes determined by the strategic plan. The first goal here is to identify where education for sustainability topics can be integrated into common instructional units that enhance mastery of standards, skills being assessed at each grade level. So this work has begun and is ongoing. We had environmental partners over the past two years really working with our curriculum team to identify where these overlaps are. The second goal is to support and track professional learning by school leaders and teachers related to education for sustainability. So a few highlights from the past year were the professional development that I mentioned earlier in April that was for all schools and teachers to learn about the plan and also how they really can incorporate this into their classroom and schools. We participated in a biomimicry pilot with the Biomimicry Institute and the National Green Schools Network, where we did a staff training in the fall and began implementation this spring. Through our zero-waste partnership with EcoCycle, they have provided an astounding 682 presentations, reaching 15,650 students this year alone. They've also provided PD for 76 staff members. And Garden to Table provided professional development this past spring to 16 teachers and 35 parents. The third goal here is to develop formal articulation agreements with strategic partners. So this work is taking place in conjunction with the work and under the leadership of Dr. Messier and the Partnership Council. The picture here is the grand opening of the outdoor classroom space next to Pioneer Elementary. The opening was in the fall, and it's a partnership of the city of Lafayette and their open-space department. And related to that, I want to highlight an upcoming opportunity that we have this Saturday, an Earth Day event on April 30 that's going to be at the site, and you can explore the new classroom as led by students. Our electric bus will be there and many, many other fun things, fun for families, too. All right, our fourth area is climate and culture. And here, the overarching goal is that all of our faculty, staff, and students and families will have regular opportunities to experience sustainability in action. Supporting goals here are, first, that we will have at our elementary schools, green schoolyard and outdoor learning spaces at all of our elementary, and that we will increase outdoor learning spaces by adding seating and shading at our secondary schools. So the update here is that we now have an assessment of our current spaces, and we're determining what is needed to meet this goal in the next now four years. Many of our schools continue to use their outdoor spaces even as the pandemic lightens and as we know even before the pandemic. Thanks to a grant last year from Thorn, we were able to add equipment to support outdoor learning at three of our Lafayette schools, such as seating, privacy fencing, tents for shades, wagons, clipboards, and more. The second goal here is to have an ongoing annual communication strategy for increasing awareness about our sustainability efforts. So the sustainability and communications teams have a year-long plan. We meet frequently to ensure we're keeping up to top of the sustainability news and integrating into the various ways that we communicate as a district. And hopefully, you all got to read the Earth Day Spot that was released last week. The third and final goal is to develop continuous improvement and tracking systems for our model programs that already exist. So this, of course, is our school food project that has incorporated deeply sustainability best practices into their operations, our Green School Program, our green teams at many, many of our schools, trip tracker, and so much more. So we've included these types of programs on the dashboard I mentioned earlier and continue to support the program. So just a few of the highlights, we've had students at Netherland Middle Senior create a green team this year to focus on environmental issues and waste reduction. Sanchez Elementary relaunched their cafeteria composting collections and participated in a live virtual explorer waste-free lunch assembly. And many of our high schools, as Dr. Anderson mentioned earlier, participated in a campaign to raise funds for trees to plant at their schools as part of Tree Plenish. And 34 schools participated and walked a bike-to-school day just last week. So this plan is a living document. We do have mapped out in the appendix what action will look like year to year, but as we continue to evaluate and shift and monitor our progress, we'll make shifts to that. But we are very excited to be deepening our practices as we gather more robust data and understand more fully the impact on faculty, staff, and students as we continue the journey into transforming into a healthy, equitable, and sustainable school district. Thank you.
And I thought I talked fast.
Was it fast?
Lisa?
Thanks. I have just two questions that are completely unrelated to one another. First, with school food project, which I can't say enough good things about, you know, it's incredible work. I wonder if there's been any conversations yet or if we might have any in the future around what it would look like if we removed beef completely from our menu.
So while I'm probably, I'm not the point of contact for the school food project, I know that there have been many conversations around it. I don't know if you want to add. I know they've added Meatless Monday, and it's, I don't know, do you want to add or should we?
I don't have it. You know, I follow up.
Okay. Well, we'll follow up.
I appreciate it. I mean, again, I know they're doing fantastic stuff also. I think we're all aware of what the consequences of beef farming look like, and as we continue to move forward, it'd be interesting. And then, Rob?
I know they also have vegetarian options. I'm so sorry to interrupt. Daily, and the meatless Monday.
We do. We eat them. My kids don't eat meat, so that's nice, and I think it's one of the reasons that's on my mind. But also, I think, just generally, when it comes to cow farming, that there are questions around sustainability. And then, Rob, I have a question for you, if you don't mind. I'm sort of curious about where this work and some of our safe routes intersect when we're talking about transmissions and emissions, and we're looking at the Whittier discussion that made news today. And we know there are other intersections like baseline and Mohawk that are essentially impassable. When we have these spaces where kids can't walk or bike safely to school, then obviously parents drive more and the problem continues to exacerbate. I know that the district is doing a lot of work around ways to try and solve these problems, but I also know our community is pretty invested in wanting to be involved with that, too. So I'm just curious if there are specific strategies that community members who want to do more around this kind of advocacy work can engage in to help support safe routes and Green School Project when we're looking at specifically transportation issues?
You know, a lot of it is continue to advocate, right? Our Safe Routes to Schools team has done a phenomenal job working directly with the city of Boulder. We have many cases where we're working with other municipalities. I think Mesa Elementary School and Bear Creek Elementary School are great examples of people coming together, the community, the city, the district, all coming together to make something happen, to make our routes safer, to get to those two schools in particular. But everywhere, I mean, we think about Whittier, for example, we have a controlled crossing there, but we also have a lot of traffic that is now introduced to that area that we haven't seen in the past. I think it's slowed down with the pandemic, and now it's increased, and now we're trying to figure out how to deal with that. So it does take time, but I would continue to advocate for people that walk and bike to school. This last week, I want to say a special thanks to Amy Thompson for who rolled out the walking and biking event that happened last week. There's one video out there that had over 90,000 views on Twitter, if you've seen that or not. But we need more of that. We really do. And I know there's a lot of advocacy here in Boulder, but it's all over. It's Louisville trying to get out to the Monarch Schools, it's Broomfield, it's everywhere. But we have to decrease the amount of car traffic going to those school sites.
Well, I appreciate that, and thanks so much for all of the work that you all are doing around both of these topics.
Board members, any other comments or questions? Nicole?
Piggybacking on Lisa's last comment, how are you planning to measure in whole community emissions within VisLab and having, how are we holding schools accountable to something that they are not entirely fully in control of? That's question number one. And question number two is about Green Star schools. Some of our local municipalities do not provide composting services, which prevents our schools from participating in that. And is there anything we can do as a district to not let that be a preventing indicator for them participating and getting that Green Star status? Or how can we work in those localities in that area?
I'll let Gita address question number two. So question number one, that is something that we've been discussing regularly with our Safe Routes to School and Transportation team, is how to come up with accurate numbers on how students and families are getting to school. We have, in the past, issued surveys on an annual basis asking families, and then we look at that and we average that over a given year. It's not an exact science. We've met with the city of Boulder on this several times. It's expensive to get accurate data, right, to put devices out there on the roads to figure out how people are getting. So more than likely, we're going to have to rely on surveys to our parents. Trip Tracker, those schools that participate, help us a lot. So we're going to be continuing to figure out what the best time of that is, when we capture that data and then measure that year over year. That has been a challenge for us in the past. We have data, but we don't know how accurate it is. So we're going to continue to explain that. So more than likely, we're going to have to rely on surveys to our parents. Trip Tracker, those schools that participate, help us a lot. So we're going to be continuing to figure out what the best time of that is, when we capture that data, and then measure that year over year. That has been a challenge for us in the past. We have data, but we don't know how accurate it is, so we're going to continue to explore it. I don't have an exact answer. I can just tell you that is part of one of the metrics in our Sustainability Action Plan, and we'll continue to work on that with the second question.
Yeah. So the Green Star Program does end up being a multi-way partnership with the municipalities and the district and EcoCycle, who raises a lot of grant funds. So it is the case that some of the cities that we've been able to build out first are cities that have also put money towards making that happen, such as the City of Lafayette and the City of Boulder. But other than that piece of it, there aren't restrictions that EcoCycle, our hauler, can access all of our schools. So we are hoping to have a build-out in our entire district, really within the next couple of years. So I think the next area we're focusing on is Superior and then Broomfield, and hope to have that build-out. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Stacy?
Yeah, Nicole's first question got me thinking about how that's related to advocating for our neighborhood schools, because obviously there'll be less cars on the road if you go to your neighborhood school rather than drive from south to north or north to south or east to west. So just putting that out there.
Kitty?
I know several of the town councilors in Superior. Could you email me some talking points? Because I'd be happy to advocate for that.
And I do know it's been on their agenda, and I think it's something they're actively considering. I will also happily follow up with you. Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, this is really exciting. Congratulations on the award. It seems very well-deserved, and we look forward to continuing the really good work going forward. So thank you very much. Board members, are we okay to keep going? So we will move on to action items consent grouping. 7.1 Personnel Items, 7.2 Approval of Minutes, April 12, 2022. Approval of Minutes, April 12, 2022. Regular Meeting. Approval of Minutes, April 19, 2022. Special Meeting. 2022-2023 Employee Benefits, Delta Dental and Kaiser Permanente Contracts. 7.6 Acceptance of Donation Instructional Services and Equity. 7.7 Approval of a Contract to Comfort Systems USA DBA Design Mechanical Incorporated for HVAC Mechanical Services and Boiler Replacement at the Monarch Campus. 7.8 BVSD IT Service Desk Contractor. 7.9 Resolution 22-11 Technical Changes to Board Policies. 7.10 Resolution 22-12 Non-Renewal of Licensed Contracts. 7.11 Revised 2022 Legislative Platform. 7.12 Grant Special Education School Tour Program Known as SWOP, Colorado Division of Vocational Rehabilitation. Are there any items board members would like to pull from the consent grouping? Richard?
7.9, I just have a slight word change that I'd like to talk about.
So do you want to pull it? Okay. Any others, board members? All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda minus 7.9? Kitty?
Second.
Richard? Discussion? Kitty?
Yes, I have a question on the non-renewal of licensed contracts, because we did a bunch of these last meeting. Is there a difference in the reasons why we're not renewing this group of people as opposed to the ones we did last time?
Russ, the question is, the last meeting and this meeting, there were both resolutions for the non-renewal of licensed contracts, and is there a difference in the grouping between last meeting and this meeting? Yeah, just come on up to the podium, that'd be easiest.
I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that, but I'd be happy to get back to you and email you tomorrow with an answer.
Thank you.
You bet.
My instincts tell me there's no difference. It's just the groupings and when folks have, when they've been able to brought those forward.
And is this mostly because we don't have the number of students to keep them on right now?
I would agree, Rob. That's my instinct as well. I just would want to make sure. All right, thanks.
Any other questions, Kitty? Anybody else have questions? I have a couple of questions. Richard, does the legislative platform change help with your concerns around the advocating?
Yes, I saw that. Now, it's wonderful. Thank you very much for that, whoever did that, but thanks, appreciate it.
I think that's Kathleen. Actually, I think maybe, Richard, do you want to read that change? Can you find it? Because I think it's really important and is reflective of the request that was made, that you made at the last meeting about how can we continue to advocate for making sure that our policies are inclusive and that our curriculum is inclusive? And it looks like the amazing Kathleen will hand it to you, Richard.
The addition on the legislative platform, 3.6, reads, "BVSD supports the inclusion in Colorado's history and civic standards of contributions of minorities, including but not limited to American Indians, Latinos, African Americans and Asians, Asian Americans, LGBTQ+ individuals, and the contributions and persecution of religious minorities. BVSD does not support removing such references in the standards for early grades because BVSD supports the inclusion and representation of minorities and marginalized groups across the curriculum." Very good. And I may add that the State Board is going to be hearing the recommendations on the standards, and I think that we all need to figure out a way to get to the State Board of Education, too.
And I think adding this to our legislative platform is a good way to be able to advocate, all of us if we want to, and share our legislative platform with the State Board. So thank you, Kathleen, for, I'm assuming you took the lion's share of doing that, so thank you for doing that, because I think it was a really good way to do it as well, because we could see this cropping up in legislation in other places as well as we've seen around the country. So I think it's really a helpful statement of our values as a district. Nicole?
I just have a question on item number 7.6, the acceptance of a donation. And it might just be this computer, but when I try to open the attachment, it doesn't show anything other than a map.
Yeah, it's hard to get to.
So I just want to make sure our public can see that document adequately, but when I pull it up, it's a dot docs on this Chromebook. It's mostly blank.
It does accurately depict where the giveaway is on the map, but I don't know if that's what we intended to attach. We can certainly make that adjustment. Okay, maybe we can, yeah.
No, but the flyer is attached, Bill, is just showing the map for most people for some reason instead of all these additional graphics and info.
I think we'll make sure that the attachment shows up in Board Docs.
Well, at home, I did it, and I had, I can't remember where I had to click through, but it came up with a flyer with the date, I think 2018, 2019, something like that. But it was there, but I can't get to it now, so I don't know what happened.
Yeah, it is titled 2019.
I probably just need to convert it to a PDF.
All right, we'll just, we'll follow through on that.
Thanks.
Anything else, board members? Rob, I have a question on 7.12 SWOP. I'll probably send you an RFI on it. I have to say, I was a little surprised at the low percentage, 15% of kids who actually successfully get jobs as a result of going through SWOP. And I think it, I don't know how many of the board members actually know what SWOP does and how it works, and so I think at some point, it might be really helpful as we're looking at our special education programming, to have some kind of additional information presented to us on SWOP and how it works with the Division of Vocational Rehabilitation. So I'll also bring it up during agenda setting, but since it's on here for an approval of a grant, I thought I would just give you a heads-up and won't grill you as to why the percentage is so low, but maybe we can figure out how all that's calculated when we get a deeper understanding of how SWOP works. So, all right, any other questions? Otherwise, we can call the roll on what we have, and then we'll take up Richard's question. Laura? Garcia?
Yes.
Gethardt?
Yes.
Niznik?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Motion passes. So now we will turn to 7.9. Richard, do you want to address your concerns?
Yeah, thank you very much. Keep turning it on and off, Bob. I also want to thank whoever put this technical change to board policies. Thank you very much for doing this. It's really appreciated. And I want to thank Kitty for bringing that subject up in terms of citizen and to make sure that we start thinking about how we even purge our own policies or change our own policies and take that language out. But if you go down on that particular technical change to board policies all the way to 1, 2, 3, 4, to the fourth whereas, it says, "Whereas the Board believes the use of the word 'citizen' in board policies creates a barrier to engagement and access by undocumented members of our community." I would like to see if we can't change that, instead of saying "by undocumented members of our community," because we also have permanent residents, and we have non-citizens from different parts of the world in our community. And I think that if we could remove undocumented and replace it by non-citizen members of our community, which would include undocumented members, but it would just be more encompassing.
Is everybody all right with that proposed change? So I think what we'll do is just bring that back on the next consent agenda with the changed language, or I guess we could change it now and take a vote on, yeah? So it will read, as I understand it, "Whereas the Board believes the use of the word 'citizen' in board policies creates a barrier to engagement and access by non-citizen members of our community." Is that right, Richard?
Yes.
And I'm seeing a lot of heads nodding, so do we agree to that change? So we will call the roll, Laura, on the revised 7.9.
I need to get motions to change it.
Fair enough. Do we have a motion to accept Richard's change? Stacy, seconded by Lisa. Now can we call the roll?
Wait, I have a question.
You're such a stickler for process.
I have a question. So do we need to first vote on the change of language and then vote on adopting the resolution?
Yes.
Go on, sorry. You're legal counsel, you know more than I do.
There was no motion pending on that resolution as presented, so I don't think you need to amend the motion. We just need to amend the resolution itself.
All right, so are we good to call the roll now on this, on 7.9 is amended? Okay. Okay, here we go. Garcia?
Yes.
Gethardt?
Yes.
Niznik?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Motion passes. I realize I got a little anxious since it looks like we're going to be getting out of here early, and I skipped right over legislative update. Not that often. So the board will entertain it. We can go back and just talk about that briefly, because I think there's some important things to talk about. I'll be brief, and Rob might have some things to add as well. So the long bill passed and was signed, so I think that that is kind of in the rear-view mirror, but what I'm hearing is there's a, literally hundreds of millions of dollars of ARPA money that has not yet been decided as to how it's going to be spent, and we're approaching the end of the session. So I think there's a sense of, oh my goodness, and not a sense of what I think would be helpful, a sense of exactly how they're going to spend the money and what the best use of the money is. So stay tuned for that, because there's a lot of needs out there and a lot of confusion as to how that money's actually going to be spent. I don't really hold out a whole lot of hope that K-12 will get any of the ARPA money, but I, Bill shaking his head. But anyway, I think it's important to hold our legislators accountable for how that money is going to be spent, just as we hold ourselves accountable for any money that we've been getting from the federal government. There was a bill to redo or to support districts that have low assessed value and thus can't really pass mill levy overrides, because when they do, it raises so little money. So to do like a matching program so that some of those districts actually, when they go to a vote of the people, would get a match from the state, so they'd actually be raising enough money to make a difference in their budget. And as they do things like this in the legislature, I think that bill has passed with no fiscal note, and the hope that they will actually fund this next year. I think it's a little nuts, since the entire purpose of this is for funding, to pass it with no fiscal note. But I know that Case, and I know our esteemed bill was part of this, spent a lot of time trying to figure out how we're going to calculate new mill levy override calculations. And what was most interesting to me, and I promise you all I won't spend much time on it, is they redid how we look at capacity, because as we look at capacity for the school finance formula, it's pretty much a blunt instrument. We look at assessed value. This one added in median income. So we now have three ways in statute that I know of to look at how we measure capacity. One is in best, one is now in the mill levy override, and one is in the school finance formula. And I think, as is so much the way we do things in Colorado, we do things piecemeal without actually thinking about what the impact would be, and I hope that we can start having a conversation about what the best way to measure capacity is and what the best way to tax ourselves is, instead of just assuming that what we did in 1994 is the best way to carry it forward. So I'll put that on your shoulders, Mr. Sutter, to carry that conversation forward. So then tomorrow, my understanding is Senator Story's bill that we have supported may be up, so I'm hoping that we will be able to support her. I'm not sure, as of the time we started this, as to whether there will be support to get that passed, but you all remember that that was a bill that would allow school districts to actually have a pass when they face emergencies in testing. I said that kind of in a weird way. They get a pass to testing when there's an emergency, and it's optional, it's not required, but at least then allows school districts, when they face emergencies like that, to not have to go to the State Board and ask for permission to not test. So it was a very narrowly drafted bill, but she's encountered significant opposition, I think, from people who didn't actually read the bill, because the opposition was in things that were addressed by the bill. So we'll see if that passes. We're still waiting. The Title IX bill, I think, has dropped, and I know that there's some concerns, but I think we are waiting amendments on that, as I understand it. And I also understand that our able counsel, Kathleen Sullivan, has been working with the sponsor to see if we can make that a bill that doesn't conflict with federal law and is something that we can live with, but we don't know what those amendments are going to look like yet. The lead-in water bill apparently has now been changed to just giving money for us to test. I don't even know if it gives us money to remediate, but anyway, we'll have to wait and see what that bill looks like. So there's still, there's going to be a mad dash to get through to the end, I think, given all the money that's still out there and all the bills that are still pending. So, Rob, is there anything that you wanted to add to, if I missed anything, Bill, if I missed anything?
Just appreciate your advocacy and just, you know, for our community and for the board to know, as we're engaging with legislators, our big encouragement, at least my big encouragement is, is when you're trying to, you know, push for legislation that impacts schools, you should talk to schools. You should talk to superintendents, right? And at least have the conversation, whether we agree or disagree, right? And I found myself during this session in multiple conversations where it didn't even occur to legislators to ask, has anyone talked to any superintendent? Right? So I share that in the sense that I just think that that's a huge miss. That's a huge miss, and it's something that I think that we'll need to continue to notify our delegation of, right? That anything, that anybody asks them to support, the first question is, well, did you talk to superintendents or school districts or school board members? You know, who did you talk to that is actually going to have to implement this idea that you heard about, and now you've drawn up a bill about, and now you're asking me how to change it, when, if you'd asked me on the front, we could have saved a lot of time.
Especially with all the bills that are piling up, right? And I guess there's one more thing that I think we're all going to need to pay a lot of attention to, because the preschool bill passed, and I noticed, I'm going to say this out loud, that neither you nor I got an invitation to the signing ceremony yesterday. But what they do talk about is the change that you recommended, Rob, as being a significant change. And so I think as we go forward and try to figure out how this whole LCO mess is going to work, we need to make our voices heard about where the concerns are and how to make it work, because to say that we're building this while we're flying it is an understatement. And so- so I think it's, you know, staff understands this bill really well. Kim Bluman, Bill, I think we've all been working really hard on it, but there are going to be significant challenges in how we implement that. And I also think, I've talked to Randy Barber about this, there's going to be significant challenges in explaining to our public the difference between what the spin is saying and what we're actually able to provide, because it's being spun as, you have to listen really carefully, that it's not just free preschool for all four-year-olds, but it's two hours a day, five days a week. And so I think people are going to really struggle when they go to sign their kid up and realize that it's not full four-day, four-year-old preschool, five days a week. So I think we've got a lot of messaging challenges in addition to operational challenges. So for the few people who are listening, it's not a bad idea. It's just we have a long way to go to try to figure out how to operationalize it, and now that falls on our shoulders. So I think it's going to be really important that as we hear things, that we pass those along to our administrators, because I think we will start hearing from parents who are concerned about how it's going to be implemented. So any questions on legislation? All right. So let me flip the page here. I think the only thing we have left now is policy action items. So we have for our first action item revisions to board policy BEDB, and I think we'll leave that to Kathleen to lead the discussion.
Good evening, board members. Back for action this week is the board's policy BEDB on the agenda. The board will recall that there were really two issues being addressed by this revision. One was discussion about continuing to have the pledge as an agenda item. The proposed red line, based on the board's discussion over the last two meetings, replaces that, the pledge, with grounding activities, which would remain to be fleshed out. So that is the red line presented. The other issue was to try to make our public comment period more consistent and reliable for those who come to participate. So we moved the committee reports after the public comment period, and then also added the land acknowledgement. So those are the revisions presented for the board's consideration and action tonight.
So, board members, is there a motion to approve revised policy BEDB? Stacy? Second. Lisa? Conversations? I don't want to just vote. Lisa, I'd like to talk about it for a second.
I mean, I guess I was being sort of serious. I feel like we've talked about this a lot. But I can restate the things I've said in the last few meetings, and we can get into this all over again, if that's what folks want. But I'm also happy with not doing that and just moving into a vote today, unless other folks want to join into a conversation.
No, I was just going to explain why I was going to vote no on it, because I haven't done that before. So I was not trying to rehash things. But does anybody else have anything that we haven't talked about before on this? Okay, go ahead, Stacy.
So I haven't also said much about this, and that's because I'm truly neutral about whether we have the pledge in our board policies or not. I have my own issues with the part of "under God," and I found myself not really saying it when I stood up. And so I am fine if it stays. I'm fine if it goes. But I'm going to vote to accept this new policy as written, and partly because I know that we have a few board members who are passionately opposed. And since I am neutral, I feel like I want to support them.
Anyone else? Kitty?
Yeah, I've been thinking about this a lot, because I like saying the pledge. I like the tradition of saying the pledge. I like, like Kathy put it, as aspirational, you know, what we want to become. However, I am going to support the new policy, because there are folks who are very much in favor of getting rid of the pledge. And I don't love it so much that I would deny that.
And all I'll say is I will be a no vote, but I think I may be the lone no vote. And I've thought about it a whole lot. And I think, in part, we all come to this with our own histories. When I say the pledge, I think we allow the room for people to not say the pledge and honor where they feel, what their feeling is about it. And by not allowing those of us who support the pledge to not say it any further, denies us of our ability to say something that's important to us. And in thinking about why it's important to me, I was thinking back about not only my grandfather, who immigrated here from Armenia and fought in Iwo Jima, but my father, who was a medic in the Korean War and was a prisoner of war and was injured and somehow was rescued, before he actually passed away, obviously. And he taught me that these words are aspirational, that they're not the words that describe exactly how we are right now. And so I've struggled with what the issue is around the pledge, because I recognize and have spent the last 30 years of my life working to try to improve where we live and how we treat each other. And so I see these words as aspirational and not as a statement of fact. And so for me, they remind me of what I want to be doing and where I want to be headed and where we need to go as a nation. So to me, the pledge is a really important piece to say as a grounding piece. And so for that reason, and when I say it, I certainly don't mean to offend anybody, just as I'm not offended when people don't want to say the pledge. So I think we need to have room for both in our lives. But that's why I just, I haven't said that before. So I just wanted to explain kind of where I'm coming from, because like Kitty, I think I've had a lot of, like, staring at the ceiling at night. And I was going to write something up today, but I didn't get time to, so I just was winging it. So anyway, I appreciate board members bringing it forward. I appreciate the patience. I appreciate Kathleen's rewriting it 100 times for us. And we will, and the other thing I'll add is that while we've had this going forward, I haven't received a single email, so I don't believe that this is a burning issue in our community. But we can move on from that. So Laura, will you call the vote?
But it's also really important to those who might be listening, that we're just talking about our board procedure. It's not about the pledge in the classroom, which we learned is by state statute. So it's just what's going on here, and there may be future boards who decide to put it back in. We don't know.
Yeah, this is just board policy, how we govern ourselves. And there's still a lot to be filled in, because we don't have the land acknowledgement. We don't have the grounding activities. We don't have a lot of the information on this. So I'm actually not sure how we're going to open our next meetings, but I think there's a lot of TBD to figure out, and we're good at that.
Are you ready? Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
No.
Niznik?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So the last item on here is agenda setting. Kitty, was there anything you wanted to bring up on agenda setting? Board compensation.
Oh, yes. Thank you. I've said it so many times, I forgot. I would really like for us to talk about compensating the board, look at the law, what it allows, what it would mean, how it might restrict what we can do. But I think we need to talk about it, because the law has changed.
And I think that's already in the queue, isn't it, Rob, to talk about? I'm seeing some nodding, Kitty, so I think we'll see that coming up. So I think that we can take care of. And then I had asked during the consent agenda to maybe get some updates on SWAP, but maybe I'll send an RFI first, and then we can get an update on how the SWAP program is working, because I think it's an important part of our transitional services for our special education students. And maybe we can even weave into that how we are able to accommodate our Spanish speakers in the SWAP program, and if they are accounted for in there, and kind of how that works with making sure that they have the same opportunities that SWAP would provide to our native English speakers.